All right, let's open this meeting up. Ted, would you lead us in vocation, please?
I agree with all of them. You ask so nicely. Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings on all of us gathered here tonight. We will conduct the people's businesses in a way that is pleasing to you. We also ask that you put your hand on all our city workers, keep them safe as they perform the jobs that some of us wouldn't do. We ask that you protect our armed forces, bring them home safely. I ask all of this of your name. Amen.
Mr. Davis, would you lead us in pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I expect that you just said. All right, I'd like to have somebody make a motion to accept the sent agenda.
Motion.
Mr. Liberty.
Okay.
Amanda, show of hands.
Thank you.
We have any citizens' comments this evening? Special presentation, we have anybody here from Dragon Flutter? We'll carry that over and I'll see if they get that.
They're at a conference.
Conference, do they have?
Court Board Commission liaises on reports. Mr. Malletti.
Court Board met last Thursday at 2:10 at 6 o'clock. We opened up right after. One of our members was missing because his name is Joe Moss. He had shoulder surgery last Thursday and is home recuperating right now. We met Steve Bales for the first time, who will be taking over the WSR. And it was good that he was there. We had a resident come to speak to us. His children are in our sports program and he was unhappy about several things. And he talked for quite a while and we dialogued with him. But Steve being here is looking into all the issues and problems. I think he'll be able to work it all out. I don't think there'll be any, and there's some problems there. The Blassey County Master Gardeners are going to have a monthly class at the Blassey County Farmer's Market on the Thursday, Saturday of each one. And they're going to start dedicating a new bed of the wing of the garden to eventual high school senior classes, which they will change. So that's, yeah, that's good. Now, the sports program is going to partner with Springfield Cardinals to do a fundraiser for the upcoming baseball season. They've got some good ideas for fundraisers besides that as well. And the Parks and Intendent, he gave us his report and I put it in the minutes, he gave it to us. On the parks, hey, Glen Haven, it's been mentioned that we should probably power wash the equipment there and the benches, but we can't do it because there's no water source there. So we're wondering what to do in that. Not too many bad things about the parks. Things seem to be going pretty good. Someone asked about a swing set at the RV park, but they use that lot for sports, practicing, and it's in the flood plain. So we don't know what we're going to do with that. The meeting adjourned at 7:10 PM. The next meeting will be a Thursday, July 8th at 6:00 PM.
You know, I wasn't far that if we do get 200 tickets sold for this thing up in Springfield, then I'll be able to throw a pitch out, first pitch out that night.
Oh, really?
So y'all get it done and I'll practice with the throwing.
Can you read?
I'll be up.
It's a lefty, too.
Any other questions for Mr. Malletti?
I don't share the night that when the kids are playing on the yellow field, the parents are driving their vehicles all the way up to the yellow field across the road.
Oh.
Okay. We stopped one individual as he was coming out, mentioned it to him, told him what the thing to do. But I think our department and our police and youth sports need to get coordinated so people realize they can't ride all the way across.
Seems like that'd be common sense.
Yeah. It'd be too much grass you can't ride on.
Bet you they don't drive in their front yard.
All right, thank you. One other thing, then we'll get back to our special presentation. Mr. Davis, planning and zoning.
There was no planning and zoning meeting held.
Okay. Warp one representative, Dragon Flutter is here, let's come on down.
Thought there was a coffee company.
Now, the owner.
You guys weren't invited?
You're the boss, aren't you?
Manager.
Okay.
The owner is in.
You're over here.
Yes.
Thank you all for coming in.
Yes.
City of Waynesville, certificate of access presented to Dragon Flutter. On behalf of the City of Waynesville, we are honored to acknowledge your outstanding services to Waynesville and the surrounding communities. Because of your dedication and outstanding customer service, your business has been recognized as a business spotlight for June 2021.
Thank you.
Let you all come up and get a picture.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
She represents for the warp one, we cut your end.
Darlin', nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, ladies.
I think it satisfies my.
Ladies, you're welcome to stay for the full council meeting. And if you'd like to leave, you can do that, too.
He's working stuff. Thank you.
Standing committee reports, utilities, Councilman Wilson.
That would be Conlon.
Conlon?
Yeah.
We got a?
I was there this month.
Okay.
This time.
Where did Mr. Conlon?
Meeting was called order at 3:30. And Conlon Wilson brought up a concern with the citizen of Woodland Hills about streetlights or lack thereof. We had a little bit of discussion. The kids are sitting up there waiting for the bus and they're in the dark. So we have a telemetry map that is, Wilson and myself both have copied it, showing where we like with the streetlights. If you remember, maybe you don't, a few years ago, when we were talking about putting the streetlights in, it was, yeah, I think they have a streetlight, but no, not in my yard. And so that's something we have to work out. I brought up the junction box, actually I call it the transformer, that the Conlon government, which I am concerned that connecting, we were having to take out the signs, go in the concrete, take out the junction block or transformer, whichever. And so, Mr. Sheldon, not him, Mr. Sheldon, thank you. Mr. Sheldon is going to look into the cost and feasibility of putting bull yards, concrete, steel pipe and concrete, for the transformer or junction box, whichever it is. Minutes were approved. Mr. Doyle brought us up to date on the American Rescue Plan projects. The money should be here within the 90 days, the next 90 days. And we will have until December 2024 to spend the money. Category D is the greatest interest because it can be sewer, water, or broadband and not tied directly to CO2. He also gave us information on a program called the State Assistance for Housing Relief for people who are ready. Program administered by Missouri Housing Development Commission. And it's funded by the federal government and it helps out people who are unable to pay their rent due to CO2. Had a park updates, electric park had five power outlets or four to five power outlets. Two streetlights, three trees, and two miscellaneous. They had put in two new services, two new service upgrades. They also, all of the old booby chairs that used to be stored in the back part of this building, which were stored in a hanger up the airport, they've been disposed of. They were kind of useless. They removed four big dead trees in the park. They cut away the right, cleaned the right of way going into a larger RV park because some of the RVs were getting hit by, or hitting, blowing hanging branches over the road. And they also helped out St. James with pulling some underground wire for a feeder. Water department had 22 water portable, three sewers replaced two meters, installed three new ones, and three service lines were repaired and they jetted two sewer lines. They continued working with Benton and Associates on I&amp;I. And starting the 21st, they were doing smoke testing in various parts of the city between 21st of June and 21st of July. We got a meeting for code session. Came out of code session. Meeting ended at 4:56. Next meeting is July 6th.
Any questions for Mr. Conlon? Mr. Rice, economic development?
Yes, the meeting is called at order at 5:00 PM on June 1st. There's no citizen comments. Minutes were approved from the last meeting. We also talked about the American Rescue Plan of the sewer, water, and broadband that Councilman Conlon just covered. We, there's some plans for the sewer and water, broadband, not so much. Business spotlight of the month was drop computer that we're just here. July's going to be shelter insurance. August will be Swenson auto service. Then we discussed some special events that already happened. June 12th, the Juneteenth celebration in St. Robert, they had the NAACP going on at the same time. And also, the last weekend was the festival on the square, Freedom Fest downtown. I think it went over pretty well. No further business at that time. The meeting adjourned at 5:22. The next meeting will be July 6th at 5:00 PM.
Any questions for Mr. Rice? Police Committee, Emergency Service and Police Committee.
All right. The meeting continued on June 10th at 3:30 PM. We had a quorum that was present. The minutes were approved from the previous meeting. And also, there was enterprise fleet management. Ken Olson from Enterprise Fleet Management presented a proposal for the fleet management that would provide the city with a reduced budget for the operational maintenance costs, 92% of the current light medium duty fleet in over 10 years. There was also a grant update from Chief Cordova that as it was presented on June 18th, the speed enforcement campaign and 4th July, drive sober and get, or get pulled over. It's not add get pulled over, but or get pulled over campaign. Also, police committee updates Chief Cordova. He also expressed that the committee is or the police department is now fully staffed. Chief Cordova attended the central coalition meeting and received feedback that they will be putting on high friction road surfaces on the hills. That comes down from the 159 ramp and everybody's familiar with that place where there's a lot of accidents. But this should help cars from sliding off the road, which is a good preventive measure. Also, there was a presentation presented, a four storms sirens by Mr. Dole provided to the committee, some information about that, of what the city was looking for and in their future. These sirens would offer a level of awareness to the public during potential storms and floodings. There are five sites within the city that these sirens would be placed. Also, with the fire protection services, this is, this is talking about the contract that was, that was proposed for fire services. Due to the extensive research of the committee and the staff, they found that St. Robert and the Waynesville Rural Fire Department was comparable. I'm not going to read this verbatim to you, I'm just going to tell you that there was, through the research, we came to the conclusion that it was comparable services. We did have numerous people that have attended the meeting that evening, citizens with comments that were concerned and had questions that were answered at that meeting as well. We had three notable visitors that night, Ms. Chavis, Mr. Dickey. We had also Mr. Fitzgerald from the Waynesville Rural Fire Department. We had Mr. Davis. And all had very important questions to ask, but they were all answered during the initial brief. We are looking at doing a total open, a, man, I'm losing my words today, a open forum for the community. So if you have any questions, you can come there and you can have those questions clarified or give you a little bit more information. So that you understand the entire process and how everything worked out. But understand that the staff and the committee has the best interest of the community at hand when it regards to safety. Having no further business, the meeting adjourned at 4:55. The next meeting is scheduled for July 8th at 3:30 PM. Subject to your question.
A date for that meeting hasn't been set yet. That's correct. Mr. Doyle will make sure that that is posted once we've come up with a date. That's correct. It'll be posted, much like the council meeting, we'll also have it on our Facebook page and we're going to post it. Will we have enough time to put it in the newsletter that goes out with the electrical bill? We may. We've sent out right now, today, I know we've sent out to the council who wants, you know, who's available and when, so we can set that date. And we, I vision sending it to maybe Mr. Marina for Facebook. I also envision sending it to Waynesville Rural Fire Department on their Facebook, on our Facebook. Hey, can I make a suggestion? Yes, sir. Send a press release out to the local radio station. Okay. They put it in their community calendar. Yep. Yep, we can do that. We're actually, you know, I mean, we're targeting a full house. That's what I want. I want anybody who wants to attend to attend. That was the point of scheduling it at a later time in the evening so they could attend. Let's move on to roads and grounds. Mr. Farnham.
Okay, roads and grounds met on June 30th at 5:00 PM. We had a forum present. We did have a citizen come to the meeting to ask some questions. Mr. Richard Behren asked about taking material out of the, what I'm going to call dry creek beds or occasional wet creeks on their own private property. And he was informed that he could remove like brush, but in order to dig out gravel, he was going to have to get a permit to do so. Mr. Doyle explained in good detail to him what can and cannot be done. And he seemed satisfied with the answers. After he left, we approved the minutes in the previous meeting. We also got a little update on the American Rescue Plan and talked about that for a while. Then Rockydale Drive was brought up, good discussion on that. Street park updates was next. They've been busy clearing ditches, removing trees near the ball fields in the park and maintenance on the trucks. Actually been busy, but no major issues at the time. Penning projects were still ongoing with snow routes and crosswalks. Mr. Doyle told us he would like council members to continue to work on snow routes and bring them back in future meetings. So if you got any ideas about that, you know, let the members know or let Mr. Doyle know. Other business, industrial park lot, we had a citizen had personal interest in purchasing a lot next to our industrial park land. And they were sent a purchase agreement, however, the citizen has decided to withdraw from that. So that, that deal didn't fly. No other business, meeting adjourned at 5:50. That's pretty up to notch young folks.
Questions? Let's move on to Finance and Human Resources Committee. Mr. Davis?
We had a Finance and Human Resources meeting on June 10th. We had a quorum. Amanda had to come in via Zoom. It was quite entertaining. There was no citizens' comments. Clear.gov did give us a presentation about, I want to call it budgeting software for the city, but it's more than budgeting. It allows us to do quite a few things, collaborate between people that doesn't have to be here all the time and things like that. We decided to use some unrealized funds to purchase Clear.gov for the city for a year. The minutes were approved as written. The city decided to pay all their bills. Committee reviewed cash flow reports in year-to-date. Right now, we're at about 41.6 of fiscal year expenses, seeing as like we're almost halfway through the year. 41.6% is probably pretty good. We discussed the safety program and we discussed the financial aspects of the fire department contract in open session. And I'll say this, I went to the meeting prior to that. I came in late because they don't let me off of work very often. But after it was explained to me, as far as emotional decisions are, I think it's, I'm not going to say it's best for the city, but I'd say it would be financially smart for the city after, after we talked about it. We talked about hours of the electrical department and some of the other departments in the city. We had made a schedule before to where they were going to work eight to four, I believe it was. Because of the heat, they're going to come in earlier, get off a little earlier. It applies for the heat, short lunch breaks, things like that. That way it can be done. One of the big things that was explained in the finance committee, and we went over it several times, but our emergency management budget, the fire department right now takes 72% of the emergency management budget. When you're talking about that, the police committee is also part of the emergency management budget for that. So once taken up 72%, that means that the police are getting less, you know, than 30%. Getting 28%. The only way to give them more money is for them to go out and hunt the residents of Waynesville down and get revenue streams. I don't think we want that any more than the next person. So we need to figure out a way, regardless of what it is, to get them more money out of that revenue stream. We talked about the annual CID report. The city will begin hiring several staff members to implement the new subdivision incentive program. And we're going to hire some more part timers that they haven't hired yet over at the animal shelter.
Yes, we have, we have actually staffed our parks with our part-time help. We've staffed, we're still too short, I'm sorry. Right. So we're still too short at the animal shelter.
And the committee adjourned at 8:01 on Michelle's birthday. Was it Michelle?
It was Tracy.
It was Tracy's birthday and we kept her here until 8 o'clock.
No, we let her go before that.
I left a little early.
She left at 8:00 and then like two minutes later.
Okay, we do have a proposed ordinance come out of that committee. Could I have a reading of that ordinance, please? It's Bill 2021-22.
An ordinance amending the City of Waynesville's Employee Personnel Manual regarding the Workplace Safety Incentive Program, fix and effective date. Second reading, an ordinance amending the City of Waynesville's Employee Personnel Manual regarding a workplace safety incentive program, fix and effective date.
John, could you discuss that for us, please? So annually, Myrmidons comes in and does a safety review of the city and we get scores each year for that. And last year, they kind of recognized the city did not have a safety incentive program in place and we lost points. We lost all of them. So they allow points for that. The idea behind that is to, you know, promote safety within the workplace and within your workplace. And there should be a reward for that. So we've been working on this internally for a few months at the city. And basically, we just call other cities, we've called other Myrmidons cities, we've called other cities just in general. And they've all kind of had safety incentive programs and some things they had, we liked some, they didn't, you know? We just kind of took it and meshed it into what we thought would work. And we're trying to implement this program. If you, if you read through the page there, you see it will basically structured like our tobacco-free incentive program. So we think that works the best for us. There are a lot of, there's some leeway there. There's a lot of incentive to continue to be safe and work safe within the city. And I will tell you that for the minimal amount of hours accrued for this, you will see savings beyond if we get this instilled in our work. see savings beyond if we get this instilled in our workers and actually create a safe workplace, which will reduce claims on your policy and, and just kinda increase the safety of the workers. Yeah, the questions, Mr. Doyle?
So if we pass this, we could technically get a lower insurance rate if we were accident free or reduced, is that what you said?
Yes, so just to tell you that our insurance last year increased, oh man, maybe 25 to 30 percent, okay? And you're trying to acquire this score on this review to keep your rates the same, but the score, some of the things in the score's out of your control, okay? But then this incentive program is in our control. There's a few things, some paperwork missing in our safety program that we need to make available. And this was one of the, I won't say paperwork, this is a program that the city never had. And so you get a score, say, out of 100, this may be worth five points, okay? And so we want those points. This is something we can do. We have a preventative maintenance, or preventative report or, or document that we have to provide. That's maybe worth 20 points. So we're trying to get the documents and the programs in place to acquire all the points that we are in control of. And that continues to raise your score, which decreases your cost. That's, that's our goal.
Kinda like 400, we can see we all need tax, campaign.
Yeah, a lot like that. I'd like to call for motion approval for this bill.
I'm making motion.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Rice?
Second.
No call, please.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Corin?
Yes.
That passes. Waynesville-St. Robert Joint Airport Committee, Mr. Libber.
The meeting was called to order at 3:00. Budget reflects 42 percent of the year so far and expenses tracking at 39.5 percent. Fuel sales have been down this month. On to airline update, April inflamments reached 689, deplanements reached 281, 1.24 million state appropriated funds. Dorsey Newcomb had spoke about state appropriated funds in the city, that the cities may receive. The funding is intended to fund a portion in the planning and construction of a new terminal facility at the Waynesville-St. Robert Regional Airport. Essential air service proposals cities received were discussed. Cape Air, which will fly St. Louis and SkyWest, that will fly Chicago. And also received a bid from Air Choice One, however, they pulled out a bidding. The board went into closed session and discussed the contract. SOP Marketing Report currently split between Google, Instagram, Ins-trem, Instagram, thank you. Couldn't get that plan out. Recommend using Google as the main source to advertise the airport as it seems to attract more of an audience. Closed session. Made a motion go into closed session. We entered closed session at 3:26, return open session at 3:57. Motion was made to select SkyWest as the EAS carrier for Waynesville-St. Robert Regional Airport. Motion seconded and the motion was passed. Next meeting, June 22nd, 3:00 P.M. at St. Robert City Hall.
Any questions, Mr. Libber?
I've got one. I think we asked this last month, but I'm not certain. The new carrier, is he gonna fly through Midway or is he gonna fly?
O'Hare.
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 O'Hare, yep.
If they get selected. If they get selected. It's a recommendation by his, by, by the board at this point.
The board recommended, but it still has to.
Be approved above.
Very many have flown in and out of O'Hare?
Yes.
Yep.
I, I didn't read the question.
What was it?
Good reason why.
A big airport.
Yeah. You ever have to ride their little cram to get?
But see, if they are the ones chosen, they have a relationship with American, isn't it? United, sorry, United. And those are all right there in that area.
It's a complete pass-through. You don't have to book for nothing, one carrier to another carrier.
That's right.
So from our understanding, as Doc was saying, you purchase a ticket, your ticket's Fort Leonard Wood, your destination is Turks and Caicos. It's from Fort Wood to Turks. It's not, today you purchase a ticket, it's from Fort Wood to St. Louis. And then you get a ticket there. This is destination, start to finish.
Yes.
So it's, it's a lot different. It's a lot more, it'll open us up to the world. It really will.
Yep.
Thank you, John. Any other business? City Administrator's Report. There's not a lot on my report that hasn't been discussed. Just kinda wanted to brush over some of the topics and, and actually discuss the, the meeting that's coming up. I know that some of the discussions we have in committees and council, open session, closed session, and even individually, these discussions are held with the best interest of the city at all times and we, we will move forward doing that. This actually marks the end of our first year together. I started as the administrator a year ago in June and I'm still here, okay? I've made mistakes, have not done everything right, but we've all managed to recover and I will tell you guys that in that first year, we have done a lot of hard tasks, we've done a lot of work together and I wouldn't trade any of it. We've done, we've done well. The next year, I can't wait to see what it looks like. There's a lot of things that I'm excited to get to work on and meeting that's coming up is important. It's important that you guys be there with this Fire Protection Services. I'd like to see a quorum, if not everybody there. The questions, I think, would come from those who couldn't attend the last meeting and we also have answers to the questions that were presented at the last meeting, okay? As we move forward with these decisions, I also like to say that nothing is set in stone. We haven't made a decision as a council. One committee has came out of closed session to open and given their determination on the evaluation of the safety and comparison of the two departments. Now it's in another committee and that committee will also make the recommendation, but it's processed. This isn't a fast snap, quick decision. There's a lot of things that we have to consider. So I'm not going to really go through my report in, in great detail. Like I said, you guys cover most of that, every meeting with your updates and reports. I would also like to hit on just a little bit, 4th of July is coming up. Be careful, be safe, and be mindful of your surroundings and, you know, but get out and enjoy too. Let's go to Council Comments. Mr. Farnum.
I would say something similar to what Mr. Doyle said about the 4th of July. It's right around the corner and it's very hot out and everything is drying out. So if you're gonna shoot your fireworks, be mindful that you could create a fire. And just cause the firecracker goes off or whatever, don't walk away. Wait to make sure the grass doesn't flame up and stuff. We don't, we don't need any houses or buildings burning down by accident. Everybody enjoy the 4th, have a great day.
Mr. Davis.
I will say that I appreciate everything that the city does and I'm glad John has been here for a year. I like him most of the time.
Especially when he brings pot. But I think John's doing a great job. I think the city's doing a great job. The doors are back open, it says that on the front now. For the 4th of July, I will not be here, but I will be in the U.S. Virgin Islands. So I did stay in the U.S., so, so y'all be safe.
Mr. Wilson?
I was gonna say, pretty much two words, just be cool, cause it's hot outside, hydrate. Remember pets and vehicles and things like that, it's, it's real hot outside, so just make sure you, you mindful of that. And again, in the neighborhoods, we got kids out playing in the streets and things like that, so just keep our eyes open for that and enjoy your holiday.
Mr. Rice?
Yes, I wanna send out some prayers to the Isaac family. Earlier this month, at Lake Viosar, they had a boating accident and lost their son Nicholas. I was at the lake that day, the powerboat series was up there racing and there was lots of boats around and everything was pretty calm. Didn't know about it till Monday, so that might keep safe for the Independence Day holiday and see you next month.
Mr. Libber?
Well, we do have the fireworks ordinance and every year with, all the years with the Police Department, there's always some people that don't know it. They may be discharged inside city limits. Waynesville, Missouri on the 3rd, 4th and 5th days of July each year between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. prevailing local time and only at the following location, on private, Leon property, with the consent of the owner and occupant in such property or in Laughlin Park or in a portion of Waynesville City Park not occupied by the Water Spray Park, Little Hero Playground or other park facilities. Fireworks may be discharged by persons under the age of 14, only if a person over the age of 21 years is present and exercises supervision over that discharge of fireworks. Ensure that permission's from the parents. Okay, Emergency Proclamation, in the event potentially hazardous conditions such as high winds or drought or other similar conditions, the mayor may suspend the discharge of fireworks within the city limits of Waynesville. The city wishes you a happy, safe 4th of July holiday.
Mr. Conley?
Well, since I wasn't here last month, maybe I could take twice as much.
Nope.
Say twice as much.
Nope.
Three times as much and get ahead the next time.
You get half the amount.
Well, I don't want John to get too, too big ahead of us or whatever, but I have to say that of all the city administrators that I have known in my years in the city, he's probably right up there at the top.
That's cause he likes pot.
That's cause he run the pot. But he did bring the cheese tree after pot, isn't it? Who's the point there? Like the others, members of the council said, be safe out there on 4th of July weekend. They have a car show this weekend, I believe.
Nope, next weekend.
Next weekend, which is always, always a great treat to go out and watch the old cars that used to drive and get rid of because they were old and now they're worth twice what you paid for.
Mr. Corin?
It's my turn. Happy Father's Day to all the wonderful dads out there. Also, a big thank you to all of the city staff that works outside because it's hot. Very, very hot. So make sure you're staying hydrated and a big thank you for being out there and doing what you do.
Thank you. As they said, Cave State Cruisers is this, next weekend, 26th and the 27th. Please come down and enjoy these, these cars. If you're looking for something to do in Waynesville, you can check the calendar of events on the city's webpage. One thing is going on right now is the Pulaski County Regional Fair. It is starting yesterday, it'll be tonight, tomorrow night and Saturday. I would encourage people to go out and enjoy it. I was up there last afternoon and there's a lot of people putting a lot of work in up there. Mr. Boone, I think, was one of them. Been there for almost 18 years working this out and so it's, it's something that we should enjoy in our county. So please, if you have a chance, attend the Pulaski County Regional Fair. No other questions? Let's adjourn.